Well, good evening. We'll call this meeting in order, and I am chairing this meeting because Commissioner Fowler is on remote, but I think he's attending. So I will start with calling the role. Commissioner Struthers.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Bischo.
Here.
Commissioner Fulford.
Here.
Commissioner Cash.
Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Commissioner Fowler.
Here.
Do we have any other online?
No.
Okay. And we owe a call, correct?
We do.
We do. Thank you. This is a regular meeting primarily for informational purposes. And first actions, hopefully you received electronically copies of the minutes from the April 30 joint session in Monroe and then our work session on May 7. If you've had a chance to review those, entertain a motion to accept or approve the minutes from April 30.
Motion.
And I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Okay, and the May 7 work session minutes. Yes, Commissioner Struthers.
I move to approve the May 7 minutes.
Thank you. We have a second.
I have a second.
Thanks, Commissioner Lee. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. We have approved both the minutes from April 30 and May 7. The next topic on the agenda is training. I believe I get to turn it over to you.
Yeah, so I have just a verbal update on that is that we have with Linda help been starting to kind of scan the environment for different resources for more in-depth training on the Oregon land use zoning. And I haven't found anything specific for, I think we're going to focus on farm forests. I haven't found something that I thought had enough detail quite yet, but I still am looking, I'm working with the Department of Land Conservation and Development for that. And I'm also going, intend to work with the consultant, both MIG was doing the development code update to see if they have some resources that they can help us with, Ross Williamson, as well as going to start looking and helping with some of their previous training at that level of detail. And then the RFP for the comp plan update and public outreach training, they may have some resources that they can assist us with. So just in the last, you know, two to three weeks, have made some progress, but I haven't identified something that I think is sufficient for our needs quite yet.
Appreciate that update. Thank you very much. I think the first thing we're going to look at is planning acronyms.
Sure.
What do you want to say about that? First of all, there's way too many.
I'll just let you know how I sourced this. I looked at like four or five different national resources, including the National Association or Planning Association, the American Public Works Association, and some other national groups. And so also looked at our own zoning code so that there's a reference to all the zones that are in our existing zoning code, and so that you could see that we do have quite a few zones in our existing code. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there's some areas where you think that there needs to be some more explanation. I'm happy to do that. But anyway, I'm happy additional feedback. This can be a working document.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Planner Petra. I'm curious, I noticed in the county zones that Philomath has their designated areas, but there's not one for a DARE? And a DARE has a comprehensive plan, doesn't it?
Yes, they do. Yeah, but they're, they have a completely autonomous development code. Philomath has some components of their development code in the comprehensive plan of Benton County. That will be a good policy question moving forward is whether or not they want to bifurcate theirs or if the other small cities want to incorporate.
Oh, so for clarity, you're saying that Philomath is listed here as part of the county zones because they jointly incorporate their planning with the county as well as their own city?
Right.
Okay.
Are there other incorporated areas that have a combined planning code?
No, this, Philomath is the only one that I've seen before like that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes?
I have a couple. So I'm curious if the acronym banana really is in there if you're just testing to see if we were reading the document.
It's a real one, like NIMBY and YIMBY and you have some creative kind of pop acronyms, but they have had some staying power, so.
Okay. I had to worry about that one.
I know, I did.
We'll have to get that in a minute somewhere while we're, just so we can say it right. I don't know if this is the right time or not. If not, we can come back to it another time, but I will ask, for example, so we have the acronyms, but we also have some other content. We're looking at acronyms only at this point in this conversation, just for clarity's sake. I have some of the comp plan questions as well.
Just, I don't know what the nature of the question.
Co-chair, are we, just our discussion right now, acronyms only?
Yeah, you can request for additional information next time. That's perfectly fine.
Okay, so I'm just curious about the LCDC. You mentioned that this was sourced from a number of locations. So LCDC, MICE, for instance, not saying it's correct, but what I understood was that the Land Conservation and Development Commission. So the definition here was a little bit different. Are there multiple definitions or is there one we should be looking to use specifically? So it's on page, looks like page seven is.
Yeah, no, there's definitely multiple similar acronyms for land use. Yeah, there's probably.
Is there one we should, so this defines it, it's actually page five of 10. It defines it as Land Development Commission and the acronym is LCDC. Is there one we should use? So the Land Development Commission or the Land Conservation Development Commission? Is there either one?
Both, yeah. They are different entities, but they have the same acronym.
Okay. Is the Land Development Commission as it is in this document the same as Oregon's at the DLCD? I guess now I'm confused. It is.
Yes, it is.
And then I think I have one other one, just a clarification question.
Now you got me confused.
Sorry. Never mind.
No, it's okay.
Delayed. I just want to make sure we're using the right ones. Actually, I don't have any more acronym questions.
I'm just impressed you guys read.
Johnny, Commissioner Wilson has a question.
Just for point of clarification, when Commissioner Bischo was asking about the DLCD versus the LCDC, they are two different entities.
Yes, they are two different entities. LCDC is over DLCD.
LCDC is over DLCD.
Yes. DLCD implements LCDC's policies.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Will there be a quiz on the acronyms at some point? I just wanted to know.
Do we have to take these passive acronyms? Do we have to?
It's painful, I realize.
Well, you know, it is something we asked for. I'm thinking I need a sort of subset to say, these are the most frequently used, but.
Oh, yeah.
I can do that if you'd like, or have it color coded or add definitions as we go as well.
No. Yeah, I don't want to create my work, you're funny, but, you know, I suspect I'll never see some of these in use.
Yeah, that's, yeah, but no, I think as you become more familiar with them, I think some of them will float to the top.
Right.
And so when you kind of get a sense of that, please let me know and I can kind of focus on those.
Commissioner Hayman, I do have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Bischo.
All right. On page four of 10, we have the, it's a clarification question. So we have an EIS, which is an environmental impact statement, and in parentheses it says federal. We have the EIR, just before that was an environmental impact report. Is that, can you explain the difference between the two?
They can be, they're both environmental reports, different entities, federal and state, essentially will have different, they're basically both environmental reports, it's just that the respective organizations use a different term.
So is the EIR then, the environmental impact report, more likely to be state then?
I think that between states it's different, between federal agencies it might be different, but essentially it's just, it's an environmental report, just like the transportation analysis or transportation report.
Right.
They have different components to them, but more or less it's the same thing.
Okay. Are we likely to see one versus the other in any of the work that we are likely to do on this commission at the county level?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Thank you.
And not to muddy the waters. Yeah, not to muddy the waters. On page six of 10, we have what's called a master environmental assessment and a master environmental impact report. I'm just assuming that that's just a designation for, that that report represents the top hierarchy of the reports that are issued?
Yes, that's, it's essentially the same thing. So it's semantics for a similar document.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on acronyms and abbreviations? I believe technically an acronym is abbreviation that you could pronounce, but like KUBA or something, you know, anyway.
Or LUBA.
Or LUBA, yeah. Okay, well, thank you so much. We'll move on to our next informational item, which is long-range planning update.
So I don't know if there, do you want questions or do you want me just to kind of go through some of the components? My sense is that you have a general understanding of what a comp plan is.
Commissioner, or Co-Chair Hayman, I'm sorry. Just a quick question. When we're on this section, are we looking at the prepared documents, the comprehensive plan update process in Oregon, and then the steps in the comprehensive planning process pages that we've been provided? Is that where we're at?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
If we are, I guess my question is, are these helpful for us to understand a workflow as far as the voluntary, the voluntary?
Periodic review.
Thank you. Periodic review. So is this a helpful workflow?
Yeah.
For us to sort of visualize this, which I love charts. I love those things. Okay, and that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, this is pretty high level. I've also drafted one for quasi judicial decision-making, and I wasn't satisfied with kind of what I saw online because it is in Oregon, fairly complex. I think it'll be helpful if we see a complex application come through this summer. And so I've handed that over to, I have limited technical skills with developing those online, so I handed that over to our PIO and they're still working on it. So you should have that before you next month.
A little more detailed than what we have here then, right?
Yeah.
So this is, this staff responsibilities for quasi judicial decision-making is a skeletal outline since it's not.
Yes, it is. Yeah, so the one that I developed is a workflow that has timeframes in it, more specifically, like actual number of days, not, not like five to 10 days, something like that, but it says, you know, if this happens, then this, so it just, it just has more detail level. If the applicant decides these three things, then, you know, these potential three things can happen. And it's color-coded, so it makes it a little bit easier to understand what the staff is responsible for, what the applicant's responsible for, and what an outside entity is responsible for.
And.
Commissioner Bischo.
Thank you. Will you be sharing that outline with us or is that intended more to be internal?
No, it's for you. It just, it took a little original thought process and I did it on paper, like I said, it's a little technically challenged with the complexity of it. But Vance County Council did review it and then I took it over to the PIO to have their folks make it look nice and as simplistic as possible.
Is this opportunity to ask questions in this section now? Okay, very good. Give me a moment to get there.
Commissioner Bischo, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Co-Chair Hayman. In the comprehensive plan update process in Oregon, there's a number of bullets. I appreciate this. So having done this process in part with City of Philomath work, this is very helpful to kind of have a context of what we're looking at moving forward. And it is by no means this simplistic, so I appreciate that you diluted it to this point, but realizing that there's a lot more complexity behind these words in this document. My question is, let me find my highlighted.
I thought I had page numbers, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm going to end up using the ones up above, it looks like. So of the document, 15 out of 24, that page that starts with what special circumstances do zoning ordinances usually address? I'm curious, on the third bullet point, it says, so to that question of what special circumstances do those zoning ordinances address? It is design review it's talking about. Many communities have design review to ensure that development is consistent with a community's vision. So in this statement, there's policies that Benton County has, there's comprehensive planning that we have utilized in the past, but I'm curious how we merge the phrase consistency with the community's vision. Is it the county's vision as perceived or is it actually the community? So like we have the Thriving Communities Initiative at Benton County, for example. Is it those types of things and that type of feedback that is somewhere embedded in this, again, realizing that this is relatively high level? I'm wondering if you can just share your perspectives on that or what that might mean more explicitly, the consistency with community's vision?
Yeah, no, that's, that's good. So that's, that's a really good example of what's not clear and consist, or clear and consistent, that we as a county really need to do a better job of identifying, clear and objective, excuse me. So that's going to be some important policy work that this body does. Is it less, we identify what those vision statements are and what does consistent mean? That's what, where you're going to find the objectivity. Right now, there's just, there's way too much, like you said, kind of diluted and subjective opportunity for, and makes it really difficult for decision-makers to decide what that means and, you know, what documents and what vision statements are you supposed to be referring to and find consistency with. So yeah, those are some of the things that we really need to do better.
So can I respond to that, Co-Chair Hayman? So to that point, I find that answer very helpful actually in recognizing that somewhere we have gaps in this space. What will be our role or what's going to be the ask from us on how we define this? Like, I think the commission, you know, we're seeing even with Monroe, there's things like, how do we share visions across municipalities, for example, right? We have multiple cities and non-incorporateds in this county, so how do we bring those collectively together? How do we also as a county jurisdiction work with our comprehensive plans with our established cities who of course have their own community identities and values? But just because there's a demarcation on a map that says this is city and this is county, they can literally be across the street from one another. And how do we find a convergence of the two and those communities, so that definition of community's vision? Another couple of things that come to mind is we're a community that's very recreational, very environmentally leaning. We also see a lot of initiatives in the, what I would say is forward-thinking in how we live, how we travel, how we build our housing and such. Where do we bring that to this space and what's our role in that space? Another place would be wildfire planning, for example. What does that look like? We hear it, we talk about it, but we talk about it at an arm's length in our documents and our policies. And because we're looking at a document that may not be revised again for another 20 to 30 years, what does that look like in today's wildfire environment with increasing risks, different ways of managing, and heretofore, again, the crossing of the boundaries between county and city jurisdictions? So just thoughts on how we might bring those together, what's our role and responsibility as planning commissioners through this process?
Well, I think your role is to try to figure it out. Right? I mean, and it might be, it might be that vision is just not a good word to have in these documents. Or, I mean, a vision statement is going to be, you know, a higher level thing, but maybe it's not a good word for your code. The law is going to say that you need to maintain consistency from the federal to the state to the local. So maybe you focus on what does consistency mean? So maybe some of these subjective words, you need to find some better words that are clear and objective so that you don't get stuck in the, in the words that are subjective like vision. I don't have the answer, but that's why you guys are going to do the heavy lifting.
And how might you see this process? What kind of timeframe are we looking? Let's just say that we tackle this one thing and I know there's a whole lot more, but what kind of a process or timeline, I see the workflow that we're talking about, but again, that's, that's kind of at an arm's length. It's hard to conceive that when we're talking about making policy shifts and conversations with our community and actually establishing language that gives us better guidance. So how do you see that laying out?
Yeah, so this is a two-phase project development code. One, phase one is this auditing process, right? So we all should be looking at the words that are bothering us and we're going to be working on the administrative things that are clear, that we know, Scrubner's, Aristins of that nature, and reading the code over and over again and taking notes and identifying the policy areas that will be in phase two. And that phase two process, we're thinking it's going to be about an 18-month process.
Was, how long is the phase one?
Yeah, how long is phase one?
About nine months.
Okay. So we should be doing that now on our own homework.
You can start to, and the development code subcommittee work.
We should, kind of hurry up and wait right now.
A little bit, but we did have a kickoff meeting and the staff has given our notes from the last, you know, 15 years. Well, the other staff has, I have six months of experience, so my list was very short. So they're going to start, we're going to start having iterative process just from a staff perspective. And we'll be giving you all updates and you are welcome to start looking at the code from your perspective, which is equally as important. And the contractor will come and be giving you presentations on things that they run, they want to check with you to see, are you interpreting this the same way that you are? And it might be, and give them feedback, no, this is too technical. This is not the kind of work we want because we're more interested in the policy work, but it'll be a good entree into, you know, yes, this is policy, we're getting a good perspective on this is policy, this is minutia, and getting a sense for what you want to be focusing on when you move into the second phase.
Are we to be focused on forest and egg zones or the goals in the comprehensive plan or the whole comprehensive?
You can focus on anything you want to focus on. That could be another exercise that you go through in a work session. You know, these, these are our priorities. Citizen involvement, we want citizen involvement, we want farm forests, we want land use. You can work on any of the goals that are in the comp plan, historic resources.
Question.
Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
And you said that it was a two-phase process. Phase one is about nine months and then phase two is how long?
About 18 months.
About 18 months. So just double the, okay. And then is, are each of those phases managed by the same?
Consultant.
Yeah, thank you. The same consultant that is hired by the county?
Yeah, it seems on this face that there's efficiency, but Oregon contracting law won't allow us just to move that way. So we will have to go through an RFP process independently.
For each individual phase?
Yeah, under the current procurement laws.
Okay, so it is possible that phase one would be conducted by consultant one and then phase two could be, or A, and then consultant, and that could be consultant one or A again, or it could be consultant two.
Yeah, and naturally, phase one consultant, and by the way, their name is MIG. MIG will have an advantage because of their familiarity.
Okay.
With the process and such, and that's natural. But yeah, we do have to start the process over based on what we think the scope of work is going to be.
And then, and I may be getting into the minutia, on phase one, as the process completes, the MIG prepares a report?
Yes, and they will prepare draft code.
And prepare a draft code for review. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I have one and it, actually you already addressed it a bit. You suggested perhaps the use of the word vision in code might not be, perhaps the best way to use that word. And I raise the question because my sense of design review has, I appreciate Commissioner Bischo bringing this specific topic up, has historically been used to limit broader access to certain zones for, and I'm wondering, there seems to be a state interest in diminishing the capacity for that. I'm wondering if we're thinking about, how do we, how do we, how do we balance an individual community's sense of itself and, and broader interests in such as more varied types of housing or, or higher density or moves towards more mixed use? I was just reading an article about the city of Paris where, you know, they're sort of redesigning their city under what they call the 15-minute principle, which is that, is that no matter where you are in the city, everything you need is within 15 minutes walking. And I can imagine that could be thought processes that could be brought into comprehensive plan. And so I'd be interested in hearing or discussing how we would find common ground or balance between an individual's, community's desire to protect its own identity at the same time, finding a way of addressing those broader interests.
No, it's really interesting. I mean, counties have a much tougher job, especially when they have unincorporated areas. So like Philomath is incorporated in the county code. What if, like, LCCAC has just reinstituted itself, right? So maybe Sarah could even speak to this. So even last night, they're going out for elections for five new positions and they're going, they've got tons of momentum, all these kinds of ideas, they definitely have a clear new identity and, and needs, and they're focused on certain land use issues in their community. They may be advocating for a certain like annex in the county code just for them, just for their boundary of their CAC. You know, maybe the other unincorporated communities, Alpine, even if they don't have a CAC, maybe that boundary, South Benton wants to have specific things that identify their code. That's, that's totally legal thing to do. It's unique. I mean, it could absolutely be a model for the rest of the state. And when we've been talking to DLCD and Darren and I were really excited, when they, when they were excited, that we were saying, we really want to go next level with how we are incorporating diversity and equity and using all these new public outreach tools. And that's where we got the funding to do this because we're going to do it differently, we're going to do it better than it's been done before. So that's what's really exciting for me to come here because I just thought that this is going to be a fantastic opportunity just to kind of throw out the old rules and do something different. It doesn't mean it has to be that way, but yeah, that. It doesn't mean it has to be that way, but yeah, that you've kind of hit it. It's challenging because you have so many different identities, and let's not just, let's not just whitewash everything and try to, you know, smash it all into the same, the same same. We can do things differently. So, yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
The other thing is with the, with the incorporated communities too, is they have an opportunity to update their development codes. And the county planning division wants to be able to have opportunities to contract with them and to help them develop model codes for their home rule communities that are consistent. And they may have some opportunities to be inspired by the county's process and use some of those ideas for their own development code as well.
Commissioner Struthers.
Commissioner Cash actually has her hand raised. I was trying to get your face up there.
Ah, Commissioner Cash.
Hi, everybody. So Petra, thank you for what you were just sharing about LC. And it brought up, reminded me of a question that I had after we were in Monroe. And I wrote the words, can you, are you there? I hear barking. Okay, anyway. So I wrote down your words, but I don't have them in front of me. You said something about coming up with a coherent, you said coherent, applicable, that's not the right word. You meant, you know, cogent to the situation. Concepts that could be applied broadly across all communities. And that made me have confusion and concern about the thing we're discussing here, which is how do we have equity and inclusion for all the types of community that we have in our county and in the state for that matter? Do you, and you've addressed this someone already, and you may not even remember having said that.
Don't, I'm sorry.
You don't? It was, I'll send it to you because it sounded really, really, really good. You should use it as a talking point. It was very impressive. I thought, wow, this gal's really on the ball. But is there, is that something that you actually have in your mind as moving towards, is something that is supposed to apply in LC and every other small community in the county?
What I think, in terms of like a state model, I think the state model part is that each community gets to define itself and that you have this, the coherence is that you have the complexity. I don't know if that was what you were saying, that we can be complex and coherent at the same time. It's challenging, but I think we have the ability to do that. I mean, there's just a lot of extremely intelligent and dynamic folks involved and a lot of extremely engaged communities that have unique identities that could pull this off.
Yeah, and just the geography alone, right? In our county, not to mention across the states. Deb and I were talking after the meeting last night, you know, there's, there's a ranch out in East Oregon that's three times as big as Benton County, you know? So it's like we really do have a diverse state, even though it's so small.
Yeah, we could never forget our silent stakeholders. You know, our environment is an incredibly important character in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Bisco.
Thank you, Co-Chair Heyman. So Petra, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Cash also what you said and this conversation that's going on. I think maybe what, and I may be wrong, but what I also heard and what was intriguing to me is you talked about kind of a model where we annex our, where you used was annex our, like LC for example, or our Alpine areas or South Benton County areas. So we, in our code, we have a, if I am hearing it correctly or understanding the concept, we have a section that preserves an identity within the greater code. Was I understanding that correctly? And that's kind of where you're leaning? So thank you for that clarification and Commissioner Cash for bringing that up. Maybe that's where you were hearing it too. Coming off of that, then springboarding off of that concept and that idea of being unique, something that could in fact be a model that could be used by others. What does that stakeholder involvement look like then to those communities in earnest so that they're very actively involved and aware of this process and the opportunity to create their identity within this comprehensive plan? How do you see that? Because outreach is difficult. It doesn't matter where you work, what agency you're in, what time you're working on, how you engage with your communities. That citizen involvement piece is essential to our land use goals, and yet it's elusive. And we even saw that at Monroe. On the flip side of that engagement that we took, that was very powerful and influential. So how do you now see that moving forward in perhaps carving out these identities for our unincorporated and even our incorporated cities?
Yeah, so the comp plan, public outreach strategy consultant that RFP is closing in two weeks, they're the national experts in this type of thing. So they're supposed to come to the table some really great idea. That's my answer.
Might I respond, Co-Chair Heyman?
Sure.
With respect to that, I work with consultants, and I've done so in wearing my volunteer and otherwise hats as well in community involvement. The national experts in the room are not the Benton County experts in the room. And with all respect to what they will definitely and certainly bring to this table, which is a lot of experience that we may not have in perspectives, I'm cautious in that we've seen experts at the table in Benton County and any of our other jurisdictions who bring forward fabulous documents that end up just being documents. And so where is that meaningful relationship building and connecting to the folks like you at the county staff level, those of us on the planning commission, and the other of our, whoever gets involved with this process, our citizen involvement, our citizen advisory committees? Where are we going to make those efforts for certain happen in this process so that when we're done, we don't have a fabulous document that's a thousand pages large, that doesn't actually get implemented or utilized, and folks just don't know how to read it or engage with it, and their voices were not heard?
Yeah, that's an interesting number that you used in terms of pages.
Wasn't accidental.
No, but you, and in the RFP, this body here is actually at the forefront of being stewards and champions for that. I mean, it's really largely your all and the county staff's responsibility to be the Monroe leaders, right? And be the advocates. It's the local folks that are going to be interacting with the local folks. We're going to have those, the technicians that have the skills and on the backside, developing the materials and things of that nature. They're not going to be the people doing the facilitation. This body is going to be doing a lot of that facilitation, if that's helpful. I don't know exactly what it looks like, but that's the intention when we wrote the RFP.
That's great. Co-Chair Heyman, may I respond just one more final line of this?
Sure.
My question would be this. So we're, we have dedicated a fair amount of money, of taxpayer dollars, to this consulting firm, and I'm excited to have them on board. There's no question that these are the experts in their field, generally speaking. What's the appetite of the county to take this group and the appetite of this group to be those leaders? Because I don't know, like, what does that look like? What's our outline? What's our outreach? What are we permitted to do if we're just going to meet in Monroe once or twice? In my opinion, that wouldn't be sufficient for building out a comp plan that really includes South Benton County. If we are going to dedicate more to this, what's the plan for that? Is there a outreach plan? Are there subcommittees that work within regions? Do we have the ability to work? I don't know how we do that, right? Do we have liaisons from this group that work within those communities? And I don't think that would hold the same emphasis. So actually, what is that plan before we get, you know, the 11th hour and it's too late and we're already done and we've spent our money?
Yeah, their second, they have three deliverables. Their second deliverable is the work plan. So it's a collaborative effort. That's the board's expectation.
And that work plan development will involve this group?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Other questions? Commissioner Bisco, I appreciate, will you?
I had a comment, not a question. Well, so I'm just thinking, if it's casual enough that I can just think with my, with my mouth. So in Monroe, there are multiple communities. There are multiple tribes. There are multiple ways to reach them. And I've lived there long enough, and it seems to be my, my thing, that I can, that it seems easy to gather a group of people who want to talk about serious issues and are capable of having valuable, significant conversations and express themselves well. So essentially, I feel like somewhat of an expert about how to reach the South Benton County area, because as, because I appreciate everyone's comments so far. The city of Monroe is a completely different community than the community when you, when you gather people outside the city of Monroe, the topics of conversation are different, the dynamic is different. It's, it's not vastly different, but it is different. And so it seems to me like Sarah knows LC, and she probably, she may, maybe I'm wrong, maybe she has the same concepts, that there are ways of reaching a whole bunch of different people. And that knowledge of how to do that is ingrained in members of that community, like Sarah and myself, and maybe, maybe like Christina in, or Catherine in, in Philomath. I don't really know. That's my comment. I think that there are, having two meetings in Monroe isn't going to reach South Benton County. And if there were enough time, then having meetings in living rooms multiple times would be desirable and effective. But I don't know, you know, is that going to fly? It's just, those are just my thoughts.
It would be our expectation that the consultant listens to that feedback.
Okay.
If I could, Commissioner Cash.
Well said, Evelyn, thank you. And I would just add that what I've learned so far in working with the LC CAC on this, and we have a CAC, whereas like, you know, Summit, Logit area, things like that, don't necessarily have that. So I would say, let's have this in our mind. It would, this would be my advice, to have this in our minds, that, that there's a good period of education that takes place. And then there's a period where the community has time to self-organize a little bit. It, especially because everybody's a volunteer, you know, nobody is in these, able to devote all of their attention to these kinds of projects. So I think that initial educational portion could be really helpful in the smaller areas that don't have any kind of organization, you know? Monroe has its own little, very busy, you know, city manager, right? He's doing everything but he exists. So in the smaller communities, we have to tag, we have to tack together these support systems and activity groups. So not expecting the tiny towns to be able to produce something quickly would, I think, be very beneficial to getting the results that, that might actually be most effective in the long run.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Lee.
So I think each community does have these centers of communication, Logit, Summit, they, you know, there are festivals, there are gatherings, there are, there are means of maintaining a sense of community in all of those communities. There are, there are networks of, of leadership and communication. And the desire, I believe, is to find those and to engage them.
Thanks. Yeah, let me respond a little bit, just because trying to chair a subcommittee that can't really move forward much because we're waiting on having the kinds of conversations that we need to have with these consultants. I really appreciate your interest and concern about how that, that works. No consultant is going to be able to understand the uniqueness of our individual communities. And so the way in which we work together to develop a sort of community engagement plan is going to be critical. And I do want to caution us, and this is my background, relying predominantly on the already established models of community reinforces the dominant voices and diminishes the voices of those who we might need to hear. And so we have to, we have to find multiple ways of engaging with the county and with the communities. And I think what I would ask us to do is when we are able to sit down with the consultants and talk about what the community engagement plan looks like, that we come with sort of well-articulated ideas about how we engage with these communities, of what kinds of concerns and questions we have about that process. Because that's the only way in which the consultant's expertise is going to actually benefit us, is if we create that, that interface with them. I greatly value their, their expertise, but it will only work if we provide the sort of local understanding and nuance that will create the kind of engagement with the communities that we need for us to, you know, produce, you know, an updated temporary as a plan and code that, you know, responds well to those communities. So maybe I'll talk a bit about, a little bit about that when I get to my subcommittee non-report. But, but, you know, I think that we're really getting into that right now, is how do we do this in order to actually do that? Petra, I really appreciate it, and I think I would like to take you up on, at some, not too future point, a guided sort of discussion through the comprehensive plan and the areas of importance so that we can then begin to focus our thinking more collaboratively about, about the areas within that plan that we think we would like to focus most, or not exclusively our energy, but most of our energy. And I think you suggested that, and I would, I would like to, if that makes sense to everyone. I think that's something that would be a valuable discussion for us.
Would it be at all helpful to send you the staff level notes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that is, you know, that's, that's one of the phases in the subcommittee group, is that what is the staff thing that needs to be changed and updated and improved? Where are you struggling to find clarity? That's, that's a critical component in that. And then I think that can prompt us to think about, you know, where we'd like to focus as well.
Okay. Yeah, you may need a sedative, but I'll send it out to you guys tomorrow, all those files.
Is it a long, 80? 80 pages? I'll remember not to print them by then, by this time. Okay. Yes, Commissioner Bisco.
Thank you. Co-Chair Heyman, are those the files? So we have a number of things going on all over here. We're talking about the comprehensive plan review files that you're talking about?
The staff level notes, yeah. So, you know, we all have a hard copy. And yeah, there's, there's, you know, 15 years of, of notes of different levels of potential edits and such.
Thank you.
So you were saying we have 15 years of notes of potential edits, and we haven't made any of them?
Some of them are there, but they're just, they're personal notes. So there's, they're duplicative, they're, some of them are handwritten, some of them are, so.
Wrong.
Yeah, I just want you to understand what you're asking.
Yep, what we're getting.
We did 50 years of land use, we can do 50 years of comp plan, I'm sure.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Co-Chair Heyman. The only question I have is that with those staff level notes, I'm assuming that those are all what are presumed to be public record items that we would be entitled to see? Or are they considered privileged communications among the staff in order to freely discuss any of the, you know, the, the process of the comprehensive plan?
So, let's see. There's nothing in there that would be exempt from public records. Yeah.
Or should it be, you know, anything in there? Well, and the reason for my question is that I don't want to put the staff in the position of feeling as though that if they have been, under the impression that they've been able to speak freely in however you conduct these discussions. been able to speak freely in however you conduct these discussions and then collate that information, that they, uh, that there's that understanding that it is going, it can be shared with the commissioners or with, uh, the planning commissioners or other, um, entities in the, in the county government. And so without, without fear of favor for them to feel as though, I don't know that I want to say anything anymore, so to speak, because I don't know how my thoughts are going to be received.
Yeah. So what I would ask though, is that you didn't distribute it to the public, but the public is entitled to that information as well. I would just ask you go through the proper channels, which is that they would ask for a public records request. And that way, uh, county council would go through the formal process, because that's what he would ask us to do.
And that's what I wanted to get clarity on. Thank you.
Appreciate that clarification. Any other questions, comments regarding, uh, our comprehensive planning update process?
Can I ask a really dumb question? Comprehensive plan is not development code. They're different documents, right?
Uh, right. So there's, there's elements of both, but you're right, I've been using both terms interchangeably, which I should not. Most of it's development code.
So it is development code, not the comprehensive?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
There are elements of both because you have references from the comp plan that implement or, I mean, excuse me, elements of the development code that implement the comprehensive plan. There's citations that go back and forth. So there's inconsistencies between those two, or there's state O R S with administrative interpretations that are inconsistent. So you have both of those pieces showing the inconsistencies between the two. So yeah, it's, it's, it's complicated.
So when we are going through the document to, uh, look for areas that we want to change, the document, we should be looking at our, first of all, development code and then as it refers to the comprehensive plan. Should we be really looking at both equally or?
It's, it's whatever you're interested in, right? So the, the comp plan is your policy document. The development code is the implementation, um, document.
And what are we, we're doing a voluntary re-update of the comprehensive plan?
Both.
Okay, okay. That's what I.
We're trying to get them to be more coordinated with each other.
Consistent, yes.
So we're doing both?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Commissioner Bischoff.
Thank you. For clarification sake, we're, what you're saying, you were using interchangeably, you're referring to this 15 years worth of notes, right, is on the development code?
Um, the staff level stuff right now is primarily development code. I mean, that's, that's what, you know, that's, that's our technical document. But there's also quite a bit of comp plan referencing and pages connected to that.
But your emphasis in those 15 years is development code?
Correct, yes.
Our conversation here broadly though, has been comp plan discussions and the comp plan review or the periodic review, correct? So we're, we're talking the greater and you just pulled out a nugget with those 15 years, correct?
Yes.
So I understand the difference, I think I, we understand the difference between a comp plan and the development code, but our conversation's been bouncing around in those spaces, is my.
Because they are interchangeable, yeah.
Well, intersectional maybe.
Thank you, that's a much better term, intersectional.
Intersectional, yeah. The comp plan is a policy, but its implementation comes through code.
Yes.
So you have to see them together.
And that's our project, is both?
Correct.
Okay.
We're going to pull this off. So after this conversation, you have any like second guesses? Would you like to have some conversation like with legal counsel or anybody before you just send us this long document?
No, not at all. I'm, I'm, it's very clear in my head, you know, what, what I can and can't do. And again, like, uh, just, just having known, um, that this, I mean, this is, this is a legacy project, um, for this community. And as a 20-year land use planner, it's a legacy project for me too. So it's very clear in my head, like, how complex this is and what, how much potentials this has. And then also having interacted with you all, I just, it's just, it's very exciting. So, um, I'm, yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I think I'm some complicated combination of excited and overwhelmed. How's that?
So we have lots of helpers.
Good. I thi, I think this is clearly going to have to be a commission-staff venture. Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. On, there are two documents that relate specifically or more specifically to quasi-judicial aspects. One had to do with communications, the other just had, what does that decision-making process look like? I appreciate both. Are there any questions regarding those documents? Yes, Commissioner Struthers.
This is where I've been holding my questions. And I think I only got two at the moment, so I won't. But, um, so I'm looking at the first one, the staff responsibilities one, and it's on page three, which would be the very last letter J. Yeah, I like, I'm going to the very end here. It says, "Write comments from citizens as attachments. Staff should delineate public comments that address development code criteria and those that do not. The comments directly related to the code criteria may be used within the legal record." And I have been part of land use hearings, I've watched a lot of land use hearings as liaisons from the city council and just, you know, as a citizen. And that last line there, it, it gets to a lot of my questions I've always had, you know, as being that land use decision maker and being part of that process is, so you will have folks who show up and they will say they either support or oppose a land use, um, action just because of X, Y, Z reasons. And they may not reference any code or anything, but they may make, indirectly make reference to the code or what, you know, they just, but they're just speaking their mind. If, if I'm reading that right, if they don't actually reference their, the, the code, their comments are sort of collected into the record but are part of the legal record?
I, I should probably rephrase that.
Oh.
So it's a good point. The way I write my staff reports is I will delineate for saying this is, these are things that relate to the criteria.
Okay.
I feel bad about this. I will say, that is not one of the criteria. And so that, that helps the decision makers understand that that is criteria, um, my feelings about that daisy is not. And so, because when you go to Luba, when there's an appeal to Luba, um, and the planning commissioner said, "I, I feel bad about the daisy," and that is one of the reasons why we denied that, because the daisies went away. And then Luba comes back and says, "Well, I'm sorry, we are going to ask you to look at that again." That is the reason. And it helps the public understand why. So that's what I mean by that.
Okay. Yeah, and, and, and like personally, I unders, sort of understood what you're trying to get, but the way that was written, like, that seems a little, little hard, hard, hard and fast and.
Yeah, I appreciate that. No, it could, I could use different vernacular.
Because we always, because when we're making decisions, we have to reference the code when we make decisions. And so when you get public comments, sometimes you don't hear that and so you have to parse through that and so that's, that's.
Yeah, so, so feelings are part of the public record.
Right.
They are not part of, they're not supposed to be part of the public record decision. And when something is appealed, it needs to be delineated.
Right.
As not part of the public, um, decision-making process or the criteria process.
Go ahead. So, um, thank you, uh, Co-Chair. Uh, so for example, at a public hearing, I'm, I've gone because I, I'm really upset. I don't want whatever they're deliberating on to happen and I just say banana. I wanted to do this.
Maybe I'll do a thing and look up.
Yeah, and I'm, it's, it's because of, you, I don't want you to build it, I build absolutely nothing anywhere near anyone, or in this case, near me. And so that's, and I'm not referencing any code, I'm not referencing anything in the actual, um, whatever the land use request is. I'm just standing there saying banana.
Can you define banana for the record?
Uh, banana, oh, I said, it's build absolutely nothing anywhere near anyone. B A N A N A. Sorry. And, uh, but I mean, it's, you know, and I, you know, I could, I've seen, um, citizens not use that term, but I mean, something pretty close, but anyway. So it gets incorporated into the public record, but it does not become a part of the legal record with regards to the decision-making on that land use request.
Yeah. And again, not everyone feels this way, but I, I found it very effective and legally defensible 100% of the time to have that into, to delineate those two things when I write a staff report, to provide the detail both for the public. I think it's more transparent to, to put that in there for the public, for the decision-makers, and then ultimately for the legal record.
Right. If I understand you correctly, the thing that we're trying to prevent is including in the legal record considerations that are not related to code, which would be a prompt for Luba to, um, turn it back to us.
Yeah, it protects the process.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the count, the county, the organ, the local government is not, is responsible for being objective. That's the sole responsibility, is to procedurally do it correctly despite that person's feelings. It's hard. It's a very hard thing to do, but if, it is to protect the local entity and to make sure that both the developer has the same rights as the public.
Commissioner Struthers again.
So I, I appreciate now understanding the distinction between legal record and public record and that actually, actually now makes sense the way you wrote that. Unless, Commissioner Bischoff, is your question the same vein or can I go to another topic?
It is the same.
I'll, I'll.
Go ahead with your question.
Commissioner Bischoff.
Thank you. Vice Chair Heyman and Commissioner Struthers. So I flagged this one also, um, having been on a number of different sides, both pro and con, testifiers or testimony, also involved with Luba appeals in the process as a public entity or public person and also being in an elected official space where you are dealing with this on the other side in the legally defensible space. There's a couple of things that I see here and, so maybe this language could just be clarified a little bit. I understand what you're saying and I understand the legally defensible space and what we can and cannot use for a criteria. Here's a question that I have for this group and for staff as well, which is, how can we help the public so that they too have the same rights as the developer and the same advantages having access to resources, staff and understanding? How do we help the public more suitably tailor their testimony so it is part of the legal record? And that those feelings that sometimes are in the space of legally defensible or not, legally criteria can still be heard. I, I, where, how I read this is, is that we may be making determinations on testimony, probably going to take testimony and say, well, this part's legally sufficient, this part doesn't apply to criteria. How do we establish that determination in a number of subjective criteria spaces? I, I, it feels like that's a dangerous place for us to put ourselves, whereas the courts can decide that on those fine points where maybe it is or maybe it isn't. But I would hate to discourage testimony because somebody talked about the daisies, right? Because a lot of times there is genuine intention just being not all of the expertise in the room and how to provide that testimony in what we would like to package into a legal package or a legal record. So that's, that's why I flagged it, is just where can we help the community better understand? Where do we really highlight and emphasize our criteria? Because our criteria not only is muddy and we know that already, there are these subjective spaces by design. And also we want to make sure we don't discourage public testimony in the process so that we are giving either an advantage or disadvantage to one party or another.
Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, thank you. And so in the same vein, and I'll try to make this clear, but, um, when, just, I'm using the, the experience of, of when we went through the, um, recent U G B for there, there was a lot of public testimony over two years or more that was in process. But I tend, I ended up reviewing a lot of the written comments. A lot of written comments were submitted to the U G B, so much of it occurred over the height of that. But, um, there were a couple of, there was, you know, sufficient topics in there and that, that's, the question is aligned with Commissioner Bischoff with, they brought up, I thought, what were valid reasons for reconsideration of the U G B, but may not have been legally defensible in terms of what the code is saying. And so I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, that's right, how do we give those citizens the tools or the resources for those tools in order to do that? Because, um, for example, one of the comments, there was, one of the written comments was, had to do with earthquake, uh, risk assessment. And that there, they were trying, they were describing in as much detail as they could where the, where the, where earthquake risk assessment lies within that arch�or area of the county. And it was all, and some of it was, some, some of it was scientific, but if I had to go to the code and where, and if the code speaks to, um, defensible, um, issues regarding earthquake mitigation, I was feeling, I know that seems strange, but anyway, um, that if that citizen had access to that information, maybe that would have provided a legally defensible comment, I guess. Anyways, I'm just, that's more a comment than a question.
Commissioner Lee.
So I, I have a, a very similar point to John's. There are parts of the code that give the planning commission that are, that are among the things that are listed as vague, but that give the planning commission the ability to make a judgment. And I can think of a perfect example in the past where a road was being considered to be closed and a logger said, you know, "Closing that road is going to add significantly to the, to my route, my, my safest route to Highway 99." Well, there's no thing legally defensible about this, but it carried a lot of weight when a judgment, when we could make a judgment that said that, um, uh, an action was going to be, to cause undue harm to the community. So this is, this is where having everything completely, um, defined as a legal statement and related to code is very useful, but it isn't the end-all and be-all. So we have to be able to, I really appreciate the ability in, ingrained in the code that allows me to make a judgment.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's the nature of quasi-judicial, right?
Yeah.
Is that you get to interpret what, you have more flexibility than staff to interpret what a citizen is saying and help them by using your own expertise to say, "I think what you're saying is," and, and be able to make a legally defensible statement that is connected to criteria to make a decision as a body.
Yes, Commissioner Struthers.
And you don't have to agree with the staff. I mean, it's not personal.
Is it okay if I shift topics or questions? I just want to make sure. Okay. So my last question, and it's maybe not even a question, maybe it's more about comments and if you want to piggyback off my comments, if there's anything you want to add. There might be a question, we'll see where my tray of tacos here. But it's, it's, it's on the policy on planning commission and communication, so it's the second document that's, uh, related to this conversation. And it's really around, number one, communication with staff and number seven, what constitutes new evidence. And again, putting on that hat of past experience and being, you know, a variety of decision-making and, you know, listening and watching different land use is the, the, the feeling that as planning commissioners, we can talk with staff, ask questions, communicate, you know, our questions, um, ask for material, but my understanding is at a certain point, the, the record will close. And at that point, that doesn't, that doesn't stop us from asking you questions if they're generic in nature where you, where you can answer those questions based off what's in the record or what experience you have based off what, what the, what the case is. But we can't go after the record closes, "Patrick, can you please provide X, Y, Z documents for us to review as part of this case once the record closes?" And so there, there's that fine line of if we want something to be, to review every part of our decision-making, we need to ask for all that documentation before the record close, closes, but that doesn't preclude us just from asking general questions that might help us in that make the decision-making process.
No, and when the record closes, you should have everything in the record.
Right. But that's, but again, that doesn't preclude us from asking clarifying questions on what's in the record.
Not at all.
Okay. Because I know that, that always gets a little murky with some folks, like, well, why are they still asking questions and we're not able to, like, with, with community members? If we're still asking questions, and the community's like, well, why can't we help answer those questions while the record's closed, and we're just asking clarifying questions? And so there's, there's that, that distinction that sometimes that needs to be made of where we are in that process.
Okay, yeah, no, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Well, then I would liken it, it would, to piggyback on Commissioner Struthers, is to say it would be, we're in, we're in deliberations, the record is closed, but like a jury, and a jury needs clarification from the, the judge, and they say, can we have this?
Without it being new?
Right, and, right, and the ju, and the judge may say, no, you can't have that because that's, that's not evidence that was heard during the trial, or et cetera.
But you can ask clarifying questions upon the evidence.
On the evidence that was presented, correct.
I encourage commissioners to keep the record open as long as they can feasibly keep it open.
Okay.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
You know, I, I don't.
Well, legally, you can.
Yeah, right? I mean, on controversial issues, it, it just doesn't make much sense. I mean, when, when things are just going along smoothly. But I think Vance is on board with that, too. I mean, double check with that, because I mean, there are different philosophies, but I, I haven't ever run into a problem with that, unless you do get close to that rid of mandamus date, and it's a controversial issue, so.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I have, I appreciate your distinction between quasi judicial and judicial. There are a lot of similarities, and it certainly has helped me to, as you start to think, well, how does a jury operate once the, all the evidence and the closing comments have been made? There's the capacity for the jury to request review of, of testimony that was submitted as a part, but they can't ask for anything new.
Right.
And I think, and that same rule applies to us, and so it's just, I think that's, that's helpful to think about. It also helps us understand, you know, the limitations on external communication, ex parte, with regards to, you know, that we would have additional information that is not part of the record, that could impact our thought on a decision, but it's not publicly acknowledged or present for everyone. I mean, those are the kinds of things that we are, these rules and policies help protect us against, and I appreciate that, so. Any more, I'm gonna jump, any more questions or comments regarding any of the training documents that we received tonight, or if you have anything additional to add to this? This has been a helpful conversation to me.
Yeah, no, I'm surprised with the engagement.
We, I'm sure we can go further, but.
Well, you know, we're.
Commissioner Wilson.
Just on that last point, where are we with the website and its searchability?
It's on the agenda.
I know. That's it?
This is part of my report.
Yeah, I'm not sure, actually. I'll get back to you, I'll, I'll send an email after asking, I'm not pointing on that project.
Asking the hard questions, no.
Sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Bisco.
Thank you, Commissioner Chirkyman. Close to the, this is also under communications, and thank you, Peter, you've answered a lot of these questions, and I really appreciate it. Number four is research by individual planning commissioners. I wasn't, mostly just looking for clarification. Talks about personal research into the applicable laws, okay. For example, looking at Luba, land use Florida appeals case a lot to see how particular laws are interpreted, but research into the facts is generally improper. Could you expand on that a little bit more? So say we're in the middle of a conversation, can't come up with an example that would be appropriate to use, but say that I wanted to look up, you know, an acronym, for example, that we didn't have on our list, or some kind of information that I had not enough understanding on comprehensively. I'm reading this as that would not be acceptable, but I'm looking, okay, so I'm looking more, what are we talking about when we say research into the facts is generally improper?
I, I actually don't know a specific example. This came directly from Vance as well, so I, I would need to ask him. There must have been some example where it was problematic.
If there is some sort of an example or some better guidelines on what that is intended to mean, that would be helpful.
Okay.
It's in my request.
Okay, would you like me to follow up with him, then?
Yes, because I actually asked him a question, and he answered me. So I guess I thought it was okay. And it was a strange issue where a, a person wanted a, a second home on EFU property, and they hired a lawyer, and the lawyer was kind of brusque and rude, and he quoted the definitions of necessary, and he, in his written statement, he actually quoted a particular edition of a particular dictionary to justify his definition of the word necessary. And he, his quote of the, the dictionary definition noted that there was a definition one, and then dot, 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 and a definition three, dot, dot, dot. Well, I wanted to know what definition two was from that dictionary, and I couldn't find it because it was a law, it was a dictionary that was only at the law library, and the law library wouldn't give it to me, so I called Vance and said, what's definition two? And, and we had a good laugh because it meant desirable, so.
Real insightful there.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, so anyway, he answered my question, and I, and then I got to this, and I said, well, I wasn't supposed to answer my question, I'm very confused about this.
Yes, I, I, my sense is just from, we know from the planning commission training, is that you don't want to go searching out for ex parte contact, so like, you don't want to go out to the site and start digging around for stuff that other people don't have the same advantage that you do, and then, of course, not disclosing that. I think that that's kind of the trail that he was going for with that statement, but I can follow up with him.
Yeah, thank you.
May I, I have a couple others I just want. I know once we get past this, we won't come back to this document, we're waiting, please, I appreciate it. If we go to number seven on the quasi judicial land use staff report, we step a couple pages in, the full document, it is page 24. What to expect in that land use staff report in a quasi judicial land use? Clarification, I, I don't know that I've seen this before at the city level, so I'm curious how, Peter, either you knew this or just you're saying it from a different place. It is the fourth bullet under the letter C. Factual information about the site and surrounding area, including, so this is what we see in the staff report. Recent land use actions, including rezonings, conditions, road violations, nonconformity, and various effects in the area. I'm curious what recent means, and how comprehensive this bullet point might be in any given land use report. And then also the other one would be the next bullet point where it talks about conditions of roads, so two things, what is that? Recent, one of this, that means rezoning, conditions of road violations, nonconformity, and then also what the future road might mean on that next bullet point?
It's, it's, they're individual kind of cases, right? So let's just say, like, maybe the road is failing, you want to know that because maybe one of the conditions is that they have to do a half road improvement, and so that's a relevant component of that, and you'd want to know what the existing condition of the road was. Let me think of something else.
Would there be a standard for that conditions of road that we would measure against? Do you find that or is that interpreted?
Well, there are standards, so I generally work with public works before development permits, so that I know what the grade of the road is. Usually there's, well, usually counties are large enough so that they have a road improvement plan, and they have a grading system, and they have a maintenance plan, so that they have, like, in their capital improvement program, they said, like, in these five years, and so, yeah, we're within those five years, so I'm going to ask that they do a three quarters improvement for that particular road. And I think I've been able to bring in some of that level of detail that you usually don't get at the planning level, just because I had been in public works for a number of years, and it's just a more efficient way of doing it, and then the developer knows upfront that that's going to be a planning condition, as opposed to being put into the development permit that comes after the fact. It just seems like a, a more equitable way of the overall process, or efficient way. Another thing would be that, hey, this is a nonconforming use, and demolition permits, this particular applicant or property owner has a history of nonconformity, or they didn't get a demolition permit four out of five times, now they're asking for this similar idea, and that's as a quasi judicial. Yes, the planning commission can say, hey, this is a bad actor, we can take this into consideration. So those are some of the things that you want to give them as much information about the history of the property and/or the property owner, because those are things that you can consider. So those are some of, kind of bad examples of why you want to add that level of detail, which in the, just the few applications that, that I've reviewed, and they're, they've been lower level, we haven't had a whole lot of activity in the six months that I've been here, I, I think we can do better in terms of level of, of detail in our reports and consistency. So that's why I kind of pulled together what I think is best practice, and I, I hope that we could incorporate some of that as we move forward.
Fair point, question if I might. So the criteria, I, again, here's another space, and I'm not sure where this would land within our decision making process. If we have an instance where we have, so we reviewed a property that could have had issues in how they managed a certain property, out in rural parts of Benton County, it was west and south, and we looked at conditions to where maybe they weren't cleaning up the location, it was our, if you all remember, our gravel pit, where they had photographs of where there was maybe leaking, and there was maybe contamination, and it was determined that that was maybe not necessarily the case. But let's say that we had an example like that, that was a legitimate situation where you had circumstances of contamination or nonconformity with certain other types of rules. How would we take into consideration, in the example of, I think you called it a bad actor, for, for lack of a different word, how would we take that into consideration in a decision making process?
Again, it's probably individual. So let's say it's, maybe it's a buried tank from an old gas station, one of your agency referral partners is going to be the DEQ, and the DEQ is going to give you comments that say that you have hazard, and it has to be mitigated before you can approve a land use application. And it would be that simple, it was like denial.
I think you answered my other question, which was about agency partner contributions to the record. I'll go back to you.
Thank you.
I have other things that I'm flagging, but.
Okay, okay, well, I'm sure this won't be the last time we have conversation on this. I'm gonna move on, and if it's okay, I'm gonna give my subcommittee report first, just because it's really connected to everything we've been talking about. If you recall, first of all, this has been sort of a wonderfully lining up and get ready, but not moving much yet, and, and I, it's taken me a little while to understand why that is necessary, and I appreciate, really appreciate a better understanding of where we are. When we initially proposed and approved this subcommittee, we said we had three goals, and one had, we mentioned one of them, which actually, Commissioner Wilson, you had asked a question about, how do we, how do we ensure that, that both sides of a discussion regarding a permit have equal access to the information in order to inform their positions? And I, I think a critical piece of that is going to be a searchable code, it, because it's not an easy, not an easy document for anybody right now. And so I just think that is the first goal of this subcommittee. We, as a commission, don't have much involvement in that, except to kind of monitor it, and everyone's so asked the obnoxious question, like, where are we at on the?
I mean, we're all, we're all suffering.
Yeah, but I think that's a critical response to, to that issue, but we're, we're going to have a much more informed and focused conversation regarding, you know, permit applications, when we have broad and equal access to the code itself. And so I think that that's, that's a critical first step in the subcommittee's work. The next one, which Peter's, I think, addressed pretty, pretty specifically here, is the staff has a long history of concerns, comments about where we have discrepancies within code, where we have perhaps ambiguity that, that is not helpful, and, and the goal then, the staff is then working to create more consistency within the code itself, so between comprehensive plan and code, and between state law and our, our, our county code as well. So that's a work that's already begun, and that will come before us at some point, but so I want to let you know that is, that's happening, we're just not terribly involved in that part. The third part is how do we, how do we actually collect and incorporate community involvement in this process? And, and that's where the consultant becomes critically important, and where it becomes so important, that's for to engage and develop a process so that we, so we get that kind of information from that process as we go around the county and have the, the community conversations or the community interactions, engagement that we need in order to do that. So that is not yet developed, it's, will be developed when we're able to sit down with the consultants and, and begin that work, but it's a critical work, and I think there's no way for us to do our part in this comprehensive plan and code update without that. And so I appreciate your interest in how, how that, how specifically that work be designed, because that's, that's how we're going to get our information. And so, and I have a specific interest in making sure that the process creates a capacity for the typically or usually unheard voices are heard in that process, and, and that's going to require some intentionality. I do believe, I know that the consultants have some, some expertise in ideas about how you do that, and, and so I'm going to hear that and figure out how we incorporate that into our, our work as well. One of the questions I have for you, two things you, you have said in this conversation has been, I think, critically important to the work of this subcommittee. One is, I think we have different ideas, but, but we all critically appreciate the role of, of, the word isn't vagueness, but, but.
Judgment.
But?
Judgment.
Yeah, well, judgment means there has to be something that's not absolutely stated, you know? And so, and so we may have different ideas about where that's appropriate and where isn't it, or how broadly vague something should be or shouldn't be. I want to have a way of collecting that information based on your experience. Did you have a specific place where you felt the code was excessively directive or not directive enough, and created challenges for us in terms of developing a decision on, on a, on a, on an application? That will be, that will be helpful, I think, to me and to the subcommittee to begin to think about what, what is, what is the place for judgment in our process? The other thing, and Commissioner Wilson, I think you articulated this well, perhaps Heather did as well, but we have, in our hearings, heard things that we think should be applicable to a decision, but there's nothing in the code that really makes it permissible. And, and, and I would, I need, I want to better understand, and I think this committee needs to better understand where and when that happens, because it's possible that community interest has changed, or has deepened, or has broadened in ways that current code does not represent. And that's where your experience with some of these decisions, and then added to that, I think, the community conversations that we have, I think that's really going to be a place in which we can further inform the ways in which we would like to see our plan and code updated. And I don't, I'm not specifically identifying any, any area in which that might be, but you've had experience dealing with, with some of these conversations, and, and a number of you said, I just wish, I think that was a valid thing, it just doesn't attach to anything in code. What are those things? And, and can we at least engage with the consultants in a conversation about how that might be, if it's appropriate? if it's appropriate, and how it might be incorporated into code of the future? So my question to you is, how would, and I need to consult with you as well, what is the best means by which we collect that input from you? Can I, is it permissible for us to just send out a survey, or?
Have a work session?
Work session?
Have a work session, and be prepared to have that conversation.
We collectively work together well. We bring those perspectives, and they kind of spring one off of one another. For me, there's value in that.
I would think that that's, I mean, not that I think that our own, you know, analysis or exploration of development code or the comp plan, and identifying the things that answer that question that you pose is also valuable, but I think they're working together. And after maybe individually identifying those areas in the development code and comp plan that we think need to be addressed, and we just bring it all to the table.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I wasn't suggesting that that would be a replacement for the conversation, that we would use it as a means of informing that conversation, because, I mean, we've broached the topic already, but I think in order to move forward, we need to come up with more sort of detailed thoughts about where we have encountered that. Yes, Commissioner Bischoff?
Thank you, Commissioner Heyman. Pedro, our question for you, when we apply our code unique to Benton County, and, you know, developed over the course of years with the history that we're looking at now evaluating, can you clarify, because I, when you look at the state land use goals, you know, we break it down into all those segments that have required, whether it's transportation, whether it is economic development, environment, et cetera, right? How much, our code only needs to comply with those requirements as an overarching kind of umbrella, correct? I just, so clarification sake, we have some maneuverability within those land use goals to really bring those values and the visions of our community into kind of a tailored, custom, nuanced annex for our smaller communities space.
Absolutely.
With a reasonable amount of flexibility, correct?
Absolutely. Not going to be able to work on all 14 that are relevant either, right? So I mean, I would hope that you're going to be listening to the community, and, you know, three to five are going to rise to the top, and those are going to be the ones that you're going to be able to focus on and customize with the resources that we're going to keep looking for.
Might I just make a comment in response to that, then? So I would propose that when we go out as a planning commission, we don't go out charging the gates with, we're going to talk about the comp plan and code development, because nobody knows what that comprehensive plan is, right? When we communicate through that means it's that, we're not speaking in plain language, right? We're not reaching the general community unless you are a policy person, or a land use person, or you have nothing that you enjoy more than sitting in meetings like this. It doesn't convey the message the same way as, hey, we're talking about the park in this region, or we're talking about historical preservation over here, or we're talking about how we build a greater, broader Benton County-wide user-friendly transportation system, where we connect our communities. So is there a way for us to tailor in a more approachable way when we go to the communities so that, hey, I'd rather sit at home and, you know, like, comb my cat, or brush my goldfish's teeth than go to a comprehensive plan community meeting?
Yeah, I hope we're not using that term. I mean, I hope that the consultant is saying, let's not use that term. I mean, just even in our interdepartmental meetings with the health department, you know, there's a lot of crossover with the work that they're doing, housing, and equity, and transportation, and, you know, environmental health, and all this business, and we're saying, you know, we're going to need some feedback from you on our comprehensive planning, and they're like, what the heck are you talking about? And I mean, these are our, you know, these are really critical and primary partners that we have. So I mean, if we're county wouldn't walk next door, and they know what we're talking about, that's a real problem. So yes, the messaging is essential. So again, we're back to square one with what we hope is going to be a critically important first step, which is getting that, you know, that consultant on board that can, can get us talking in a different way.
That is helpful. Yeah.
We all talk in jargon, and it's, it's, it's just blocks everything. Nobody knows what, what's equity.
We'll just hand out the acronym sheet to the public.
You asked for it.
So that's where we're at on the subcommittee on code, any questions?
Yes, we're on that subcommittee.
So far, me and Commissioner Struthers, and there have yet to be identified additional members that represent broader interests, departments, and community staff, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Heyman and Commissioner Struthers.
I just want to mention that the entire planning division has volunteered, this is, they love this stuff.
Well, let's get together.
I said, I don't, I can't afford all y'all to participate, you know, at the same level, but they are all really excited to do this work as well, so.
That's, that's great to hear. Yeah. Commissioner Fulford, would you like to make an update on our housing subcommittee?
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you. Update, probably, probably pretty quick. So regional housing, last few weeks, I'll say we're in sort of a transition of sponsorship or leadership from the county side. I think that's sort of shaken out finally. Right now, we're in a socialization window, probably for the next, I'd say, couple months, maybe three months, where we start talking to folks. We've been talking to a lot of folks, so it's been about 10, 12 groups. This past couple of weeks, we met with Boys and Girls Club was one, I think we met with HCS, and what was her name? We'll meet with her tomorrow, Tenisha Rosa from HCS. So socialization's still going on. I think the key with that is, and this is maybe a challenge to the other commissioners, is if you have people that you think we should be meeting or talking to about either workforce housing or some sort of middle housing, definitely reach out and pass their name along. You know, I think it's inclusive, the more the merrier, getting all those perspectives. So I think that's progressing pretty good, probably another two, three months, but I think once that's done, we move into sort of a meeting phase where we start talking to all the partners, and hopefully set some phases, some priorities. I think Evelyn, you said, hey, where's that meeting where everybody sits and gets to vote on different priorities and stuff, some actual action. Those will be, those kind of meetings. In the first phase, I think, we'll see how it shakes out in the end, but it's probably some inventory of the land, land use around the region, as well as some infrastructure gap analysis. If we can get that into the 2025 session, and get some matching funds from the government side, she'd be in good shape. I don't want to lose, Rick Rieger was saying it was, no, Darren was saying it was right around September timeframe, we need to submit, and so we need to meet that. And I'm going to slip on that, I know we've been going through some odd things here, but yeah, so submitting September, October timeframe, hit the legislative session, and then basically we started back up for all the same things, new discussions, once all that steps. Overall progress, we're in socialization, so two months of that, and we'll start having to do some actual work, and not just talk about. Anyway.
Any questions, Commissioner Lee?
I have concerns. I'm just pulling together some threads from the last couple of meetings, we're talking about timelines, and there are, there is a, another large time commitment that may or may not be coming our way, and I'm concerned that many of these tasks are going to intersect with a very large project that may be coming up in the same timeline. Is, is that, is my perception true? Does it, is there anything we can do about it, or just, you know, clean our glasses and drink more coffee?
Just ride the wave. We don't have any control over this situation.
Right. So I would also like to make a comment, if that's okay. I don't know, and I don't know if it's appropriate, so I'll just say it if it's okay. Because I, you know, I drive back and forth to visit my mom a lot, and I have time to think, so I was thinking about housing, and about our role in housing, and I was thinking about the history of Corvallis, and Benton County and housing, and I was thinking about your socialization, which I, I haven't, so I've heard what you said, but I haven't digested it completely, but I understand, I hope that you're making serious approaches to organizations like OSU and Samaritan, because it seems to me those two organizations, they have had historically business plans that call for extreme growth, and those business plans did not account for the inevitable impact that extreme growth would have on Benton County. And in other words, to me, as a citizen, their business plans failed, and their business plans should incorporate, and they should be first people involved in our effort to deal with housing. Why should the citizens of the county jump on board and says, we need to solve this problem? They need to participate in solving this problem, because it's their business plans that have created, and played a very, very large role in this, and they need to have the expended resources as well as the citizens of the county to solve this. And I don't think my, so I'm saying this as an individual, but I don't think my point of view is unique.
If I could, I could take a shot at, at listening to you and answering to a certain degree, during discussions with Darren, he was giving us a model from Washington, and what that model looked like, and I think he was trying to redo it here, was he got about 15 different companies that need workforce, that had workforce, that kept leaving for various reasons, and asking for money, and said, hey, I need you to podium either land or money. And they did it. And the first, I think, pot of money was like 100 grand, State matched it with 700 thousand, and they used that as year one, I'll say baseline information gathering funding.
You're in Benton County or in Washington?
This is deep Washington.
Okay.
But same model, and so we can talk to OSU, we can talk to, we haven't done good Sam yet, Benton County, school district, all these are in play, because you're right, it's workforce housing, and, you know, they see, they can't get engineers, they can't get doctors, these people are like, I'm going to commute 45 minutes, really? I can go up the road and walk to work, so why am I doing this? So the key is, it's time to put up, right? It's time to ask you for money, and hopefully that's where we go with this. But the initial thought was, and we can't have things too predetermined, you're going to have to kind of walk the walk, but at some point, we'll, we'll say, hey, listen, we need X amount of dollars from each one of these key partners. Because the legislature, from what Darren was saying, when they see a county or a region coming to them, saying, hey, we've got these critical partners, they, you know, put up X amount of dollars, we're looking to match your plans, or whatever.
Well, I think they, those critical partners need to realize that the citizens around them see the situation and hold them responsible.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, just to follow up on the first part of Commissioner Evelyn's comment. The first part of your comment, Commissioner Evelyn, that was.
I was driving, I was driving back and forth to visit my mom.
Timeline, yes, sorry, thank you. Thank you, I'm sorry, I had a echo. No, I think that what I wanted to reinforce, and this is really for the committee chairs to sort of think about, because as you said, we may have what I'm going to call the front burner going full blast here in a month or so, but I keep thinking of the committees as the simmer, that they're going to, we're going to be simmering, they're still, and things are going to still be cooking, but on simmer, while the, one of the burners is on full blast, so that we're not really stepping away, so to speak, but that, you know, we're trying to keep things moving along. I'm hoping that that may be the vision of the committee chairs in order to, because I know, I agree with Evelyn, that there's going to be a significant workload increase if we get a major project that comes in from the development community. So anyway, that was my comment.
Actually, at our last meeting, Ed was brought up, it was like, you know, Benton County's talking trash, and there's a Republican thing that comes through, it's a figure of the python, right? If it comes through, how are we going to get impacted, are we going to miss our pay? So I'm assuming, sure, that legislation says that session's going to be it, you know, if we're ready to know.
Well, I appreciate your metaphor of riding a wave, because, you know, there's a specific timeline for our comprehensive plan review as well, and we're pretty committed to that, so we're going to, we're going to do it. So any other?
Drink more coffee.
Any other questions, comments on this subcommittee's work? Yes, Commissioner Bischoff?
Thank you, Coach Heyman. A few, I was looking at the slides, I couldn't see them when I was remote, and I was taking a look at the slides afterward, and I really appreciate the work and what's been done thus far in this space. I am curious about, so Commissioner Fulford, you mentioned the socialization space and the 10, 12 groups that you're working with, but then you mentioned the coming back to, maybe it was business partners? What's the difference? If you're socializing with a whole group of individuals, just got done with Boys and Girls Club, what's that next group? I wasn't sure that I understood where that delineation was, or who that next group of stakeholders was.
Yeah, as far as, actually, we're partnering with Red, Rick's guy, like, four or five other ones, calling up, Boys and Girls Club, HCS, actually working with Linda, we're just scheduling them. The way I usually work is, I give calendars, Linda goes to meet one of these people on such and such a day, the day before, I link them up, kind of review them.
So it's kind of that same group that you had in that sense?
No, it's brand new, sort of.
Where? Okay. To that point, then, not being clear whether or not this is happening, housing has historically taken place more in our cities than our counties. Are we involving our local governments in this conversation? So for example, and I'll use Fallon, and I know Commissioner Struthers can probably speak to Corvallis to an extent, we just finished a housing needs analysis, and available land inventory, we kind of know what we're looking at, and there's a lot of things happening at local government levels there, but certainly there's more housing development happening in, per acre, in like a community of Flumet than we might see at Benton County. With the state leaning into possibly counties having more weight in on where housing happens, or how housing is populated across the county, are we connecting, is the subcommittee connecting or planning to connect with our developed, excuse me, incorporated and unincorporated some of these liaison staff, but also elected? So staff is staff, and they have that expertise, but the electeds, of course, are in that space of representing community and community visions and passions and interests.
Yeah, so I think at the big picture, probably about 25%, 30% with the 10, 12. Is there another 20, 25 votes that we need to get, were city votes in there, yes, other county votes in there, yes? Other, you know, good Sam? Absolutely. So yeah, if you have and want to help us schedule or create contacts, it's more the merrier, it's not, it's not, it's not run like this and try to.
If I may interject, Rick Rieger's asked me to.
Comment from the audience.
Connect with, I gave up information for the mayors, the cities, so that is.
So at least the mayor could read that. Also, I have a couple more, is this okay? Okay. So the climate-friendly and equitable communities options, that's going to intersect in this region, it's not city or county specifically. Well, it's county, it's the metropolitan population areas. Where is that intersecting with this housing conversation on this committee? Because it's unavoidable, we can't, so the idea of three stories in anywhere in Fallon is really kind of a remarkable and relatively unknown reality. is really kind of a remarkable and relatively unknown reality of this space, and it's not just Paloma. So what does that look like in this conversation?
So are you talking to like a thousand friends of origin?
I'm talking about the, the LCD, so Department of Land and Conservation Development developed what they call climate friendly and equitable communities. You passed this, right?
No, it came out of a former Governor Brown's executive order on climate change.
So it came through the governor's office, but we sourced it DLCD first, yeah, okay. So, and that came, do you remember, was that an executive order or did that come through legislation?
It was like an executive order.
Okay.
It may have not be qualified in state law, but it was originally through executive order.
And it affected change, we'll just say lots of things. There's some more, CFA, climate friendly and equitable communities. It was based on population densities, so our most dense areas, Benton County, Corvallis centered, and around Corvallis areas will be required to meet and comply with these pretty significant shifts in what would normally have been home rule, that was just kind of overruled, superseded. And so that it's an unavoidable space when we talk about housing. So I'm curious where that conversation, if it hasn't yet, where that might. And I won't, you know, deliberate on that any further, but it's a question to consider. And then my other question is really this one. So we have a full suite of commissioners at this point. We have lots of experience sitting at this table, which is really quite extraordinary. I don't know if it's always been this way, but it's a privilege to sit with this group. I am somewhat challenged by the fact that we are literally making what will amount to policy decisions with two of nine in the code recommendations that we might bring forward. And we're engaging with, and it's not to say it's necessarily wrong, but it is a question that's coming up in some spaces. We have just, it's you and Fisher Irish, correct?
Right, right. At least during the socialization.
In the socialization space, there's no public record. As a commissioner, I don't actually have any idea outside of these reports what's actually going on. We are representing the planning commission through two individuals who are, you're appointed to this space, so that's appropriate. And at the same token, I feel like, how does the public track what we're doing or even weigh on or decide that, hey, I want to be one of those groups, we come talk to us, for example, in this case? How are we actually documenting what's happening here? So in our local government at the city, we have public works committees, for example, we have police committees, but there were records, there were minutes, there were agendas, and, and we could track that so that when you came back with those recommendations, not only were we kind of following along and ready to move from that point of conversation forward, we also had some opportunity to weigh in on, well, like CFA, for example, you know, it's a resource and a tool that would benefit this conversation, and yet it's, it's absent in some way. So I feel like there's a gap here in that, so staff's been doing a lot of work in both of these spaces, I know the commissioners are as well, and I don't mean any disrespect in bringing this forward, but how does the public stay apprised of what's happening on pretty major recommendations that are likely to come out of these subcommittees?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question, right? So as far as socialization, right, we prepared two documents, one was a sense last, and one was a charter statement. Basically, what we do in the meetings as we go through there, right? And so part of the, part of the program is to have a website and some facts packs so we can track it more. We need to probably circle back around with Shannon. And then run it, I noticed the website first, and start publishing some of this stuff, because you're right. And, and as far as, you know, a little personal interaction, you know, we pitch what we're doing, and then we usually, it's a soft invite, hey, you want to participate? And I think, yeah, yeah, we'd love to. Okay, that's right, and move on to the next one. But you're right, you know, there's a conversation longer, a little bit, but, you know, we kind of go through the slides.
Well, I appreciate the work and the slides were great and the charter was great. I just feel like we're missing that public facing part of what we're doing as a public body that ultimately will lead to decision making. The other piece?
Maybe a quick question for you. So the way I see it, right, is we, you know, just a couple of it, so we go out, we're trying to be a soft invite, and once they all say yes, we then have them show up here, and then we have minute taking, where we have kind of the structure. So it's a soft invite, do we need minutes and notes published from soft invites? You know, I, I don't know. I mean, I've been taking, taking minutes, I have, I convert it to.
For this, I think you tried to set up these committees to avoid this need, but.
So a good question, and I appreciate that. And then my other question to this point also is, if we are actually soliciting funding to come to the county through this vehicle, there are two business spaces, is this something that should be public, at least recordable, some sort of a record? What does that look like when we're asking for funding and now we're talking about legislative proposals as well? And again, no disrespect at all, but it's not coming from the planning commission, it's coming from the work of two planning commissions of a body of nine that is an appointed body of the Benton County Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, so, so I always had this trouble of kind of getting out in front, where do we go? Have we actually asked for money? No. Was the model presented from Darren and say, hey, this is what worked in Washington? And so what I've been doing is meeting with him every week, say, do we do this now? Do we do this now? How is the coordination, what's the timing, stuff like that? So have we asked for money? No. Have we actually gotten to the point of saying, it's time to do the legislative thing? No. Have we got a mind leaning thinking that? Yes. But I think a lot of the structure would come out of the serious meetings.
And legislative?
And Vice Chair Hayman, may I perhaps make a couple of comments here?
Yes, Commissioner Fowler, Chair Fowler, yes, for sure.
So Commissioner Bisco, you raised some very good points, and the subcommittees operate under the aegis of the planning commission. The planning commission is the governance body for each of these subcommittees. And as you observed in the last several sections, we now have a sanding topic on our agendas, which are subcommittee updates. And it is at these subcommittee updates that their work product is reported not only to the planning commission, but it becomes a matter of public record at that time. And those things that require governance decisions will come to the planning committee to, to make those decisions. Does that help at all, Commissioner Bisco?
It does, Commissioner Fowler, thank you. It's a place that I wouldn't want us to run afoul, so I appreciate your perspective and where we're bringing that to the public record space. If there's opportunity to raise that level of public transparency, I would, I would appreciate and I would benefit from that as a member of the planning commission. I've had individuals inquire that might also appreciate that if there's opportunity to improve that transparency.
Yeah, there's, there's always this dynamic tension of how much of the sausage making do we, do we do right out in the public? And how much do we refine a little bit and present as, as updates and specific decisions? So we're trying to strike that balance with this dynamic tension, and we need to work through it. This is, these are the first two subcommittees that the planning commission has formed, at least in my tenure as a planning commissioner. And, and so we're, we're establishing the, the governance process and the process by which the public is formally engaged and the public record is established in kind of a dynamic fashion.
So, thank you, Chair Fowler, I really appreciate that. Commissioner Lee?
So I would like to express my appreciation for this clarification, and I think I would reiterate my earlier statement because I was unsure whether I had a clear path to provide some feedback. And my feedback is, is just what I said, and you're talking about soft, soft invitations. And, and my feedback is that some of those invitations should be a little harder, should make sure, we need to make sure that some of these companies who have had a historic role in the current situation feel that it's very important for them to participate. And they, they need to be told that. And I don't know if you're, you're conveying that, but, so I appreciate that feedback. And there's one other comment that I wanted to make. So for instance, in Monroe, when you invite the mayor, I know what's going to happen. He's going to tell the city manager. And I know what's going to happen is the city manager's too busy to deal with it. So I would suggest you send it to the council, the city council instead of the mayor, or to the mayor and the city council, because then they will all be aware of it. And if you just send it to the mayor, the council members may not get to be aware of it.
Yeah, I suspect that we will much better articulate our interactions with the various communities as a result of our work with consultants. So, yes.
Thank you, Coach Hareman. I just wanted to reinforce that I appreciate Commissioner Bisco's articulation of some of the things surrounding all of the work of the, and the, the good work that the two commissioners are doing in these subcommittees. I feel that she has been able to articulate something. I think I tried to articulate it at our last meeting, but I probably did it inartfully, and so I didn't get the response that I, that I was desiring. And so I appreciate the, the clarification. And also Commissioner Fowler's clarification of how those committees operate in the public sphere, both with the commission, the, the planning commissioners, and within the public and the community at large. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Yes, and one thing's, I will do or asked, Petra and I have quickly discussed, is there are very specific rules established in, in state law with regards to how subgroups of a elected or appointed body can operate, the parameters within their operations, and, and it might, I think it'd be good for us to just do a quick review of what, what those rules are, that is applied to the subcommittee. I just think it'd be clarifying for us, and it's not hard to do. We'll, we'll, we'll take care of that. The subcommittees are not meant to represent the commission, they are not meant to do the work of the commission. The work of the commission is in the commission's hands, and, and that has, has to be the way in which this work is done, so. You know, I promised to be done in two hours and I'm not. You have not been cooperative.
Sorry. I'm, I'm joking. We need to be more, so we can?
Yes.
I'm astonished.
I don't know. I think this has been fantastic. We do, at the end of each meeting, offer an opportunity for staff to offer any comments or information that need to be shared and put on the record. Are there any?
I, I have nothing, but maybe just a summary of tasks. And I do like to do a summary, I hope that's going to be helpful for you, usually the next day if I can. So just to send our drive notes for the development code references, to get an update on the searchable code status, to. I've only had six months with these things, I can't stand it. The, da, 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 can, oh, that's my own note. Summary, and to remember to send out a summary email tomorrow. Am I missing anything? Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Bisco?
Vice Chair Hayman, I'll, I'll maybe just attend next time virtually, and that way you can't see my hand. I do have a question with searchable database. In going back and looking at Benton County Talks Trash final report, the search engines bring up any number of references to that document that inevitably are all 404s, or they go to now our main pages. So all of the links in the, what do they call this?
The broken links.
It's broken links all over. So the member statements that were part of the Benton County Talks Trash, all of the links. And being one of those members and knowing how much I not only relied on the work of others in that space, but also the time and effort put in resourcing and referencing back to documents, as well as the document provided to this group on the subcommittee work that we did, I'm seeing that the majority of not all of those links are inactive or going to just a general landing page that's, what would you like to do at Benton County? And I'm like, I'd like to have the information I was looking for to begin with.
And I suspect, and I suspect that those broken links are because of the transition to the project.
I suspect, yes. At the same token, in light of pending potential applications, that is a resource tool that has relevance in a number of spaces. There's a lot of factual documentation in there that will also have bearing outside of our scope of criteria. Is there, is that going to be restored, I guess is my question? Because absent that, it is literally a 1,099 page document filled with hundreds of references that have now become ineffective.
I agree. I, I have forwarded more than I can count of broken links, not just to that document. I'll see last night a whole other list of frustrations. If we, after adjournment, I have a recommendation for you.
Okay.
I do too. If you download the PDF and, and search it on, you can do, you know, Command F and you can search it. But I don't know if the links are.
The links are. The links don't go back to the resource material that was built in the Benton County Talks Trash. So all of our public facing archives and documents.
The internal links of the document.
From that document. So the search within the, the document itself is there, but the links that refer back to, so refer to such and such committee report, refer to such and such meeting notes.
Okay.
That are now missing, and that's a fight.
What it sounds to me is if the people responsible are aware of the frustration.
They are.
Okay.
Just one last comment, just sorry. But speaking of the website, I, I remember having a Zoom call with, I can't remember her name, I'm sorry. Yes. Did we, did everybody else have?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure. Okay.
Yeah, really, thank you.
Kylie.
Okay.
Okay.
Any additional from the commission? Well, then we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed this here at Sarah's space, and I don't know, and since she wasn't here, I don't know if it was intended for her.
I put down one, she was here and then not spoken. Okay.
Might this be a meeting that I was invited to that I didn't see an email for?